...be standing for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Sam.
Councilmember Green?
Here.
Councilmember Tavallaro?
Here.
Councilmember Hall?
Here.
Mayor Fattini?
And I am here. And I take it that she will not be in the house?
She will not. She asked last council meeting to be excused.
And I give a motion. I make a motion to excuse Councilmember Green.
I will second that.
In favor?
Aye.
On to item number two, ceremonial agenda. I want our council to know now that item B has been pulled and so we have Captain Sumbia from the Assistant Community Service Council, child abuse prevention awareness.
Mr. Mayor? There's a copper old Toyota pickup out front with the lights on, but not the automatic lights, they'll turn off. Go a bit better.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members, colleagues. Thanks for giving me the chance to speak with you tonight just for a few minutes. I'd like to talk to you a little bit about the Siskiyou Community Services Council and remind you that we have two primary purposes. First is to act as Siskiyou County's Child Abuse Prevention Council, improving our community's efforts to prevent and respond to child abuse. Our second primary purpose is to provide leadership, to identify resources, build capacity, and maximize collaborative efforts to support healthy families and vibrant communities. Originally formed in 2002 by the Siskiyou County Board of Supervisors, the CSC became a nonprofit 501(c)(3) corporation in 2005. We've maintained our original function of overseeing the coordination, research, development of policies affecting service delivery in Siskiyou County. In this capacity, we serve as advisory to the Siskiyou County Board of Supervisors. We receive funding through a variety of sources, including state, federal, and foundation grants, donations, contract fees, and child abuse prevention trust funds. The Community Services Council also functions as an umbrella organization for a number of community coalitions, which I'll describe to you in just a few minutes. County Board of Supervisors has declared April as Child Abuse Prevention Awareness Month in Siskiyou County. It's a time to renew our commitment to ending child abuse. Our slogan this year says it all: Every child safe, every community aware. And I hope that you all received the pin that I brought for you this evening. I also have for the city, at the request of Councilmember Tavallaro, a do-it-yourself pinwheel garden that I will leave for you. I understand that's going to be planted. I understand that that is going to be planted in front of Abner Weed Plaza this week, so thank you very much. The pinwheels are a great visual reminder for our message this year. Pinwheel gardens will be planted throughout the nation and at over forty, I think it's actually close to fifty locations in Siskiyou County this year, probably some in your neighborhood as well. While the pinwheel creates a memorable and compelling visual, it's the story behind the pinwheels that makes the biggest mark. Pinwheel represents fun, growth, and hope. Isn't that what we want all of our children to have? Throughout the U.S., a report of child abuse is made every ten seconds. Child abuse occurs at every socioeconomic level, across ethnic and cultural lines, within all religions, and at all levels of education. By far, the most common form of child abuse is neglect, representing two-thirds of the cases reported in this state. And if we look at age, nearly half of all abuse reported is with children ages six to fifteen. You're probably wondering, what does child abuse look like in Siskiyou County? The most recent data shows us at fifty-three out of fifty-seven counties in this state, with a rate of nineteen point four cases per thousand children, about two percent. That's about a hundred and seventy-five children affected by abuse or neglect, sufficient enough to warrant a complaint. It's not an admirable place to be, fifty-three out of fifty-seven counties, but the good news is it's slightly better than many of the northern rural counties. In a north state, only Humboldt and Shasta counties have lower rates, but they're still both worse than the state average, excuse me, of eight point two per thousand. In general, the more economically affluent counties, including much of the San Francisco Bay Area, have lower rates. The local economy is a significant factor in child abuse and neglect. If you look at a map of the state of California indicating the counties with the highest rates of child abuse, and overlay that with a map showing the local economic conditions, those counties with depressed economies show the highest rates. Conversely, counties with booming economies reflect slightly lower rates of abuse and neglect. The challenge is much greater than teaching good parenting skills. It's about our local community. The CSC is really dedicated to our role as the Child Abuse Prevention Council and is working on many fronts to attack the root causes of child abuse. Factors that lead to abuse or neglect include poverty, unsuitable housing, lack of access to health care, whether that be primary care, dental care, or mental health care. And last of all, substance abuse. Let's look closer at a few of those root causes and allow me to tell you stories of how our work is impacting the community in five different areas. The first is our Poverty Awareness Coalition. Poverty affects all of us in one way or another. The CSC recently formed the Poverty Awareness Coalition to increase our understanding of the specific ways poverty affects our community. We were recently selected as one of twelve coalitions nationwide to participate in a year-long effort sponsored by the National Association of Counties, focusing on the impact of rural children living in poverty. Awareness is key. In our impact team, including Stephen Schoonmaker, Debbie Walsh, and Kirk Andrus, as well as the CSC staff, will be working on a countywide awareness campaign to promote greater community-wide understanding of the effect poverty plays on our county health. We hope this will lead to more creative, local problem-solving. Second area is child sexual abuse prevention. I'm sure you've all heard the tragedy affecting many of our country's brightest young gymnasts, sexually abused by someone that they, their coaches, and their families trusted. We're doing our part to make sure that doesn't happen to our young athletes. Our Stewards of Children Coalition has trained over five hundred and twenty of our concerned friends and neighbors in Siskiyou County on the signs and the ways to protect children from sexual abuse. Our coalition has a goal of training an additional fifteen hundred adults in the next two years, and we invite you to help promote that project. The training is two and a half hours, it's free, and we'll bring it to your organization or your workplace. Third is our Siskiyou Substance Abuse Coalition. I mentioned that substance abuse is one of the key root causes of child abuse. Alcohol and drugs, especially with the recent legislation of recreational marijuana, have the potential to kill dreams of many young people. Leon Mahan, from Scott Valley, one of the lucky ones who lived to tell about his near-death experience from drinking and driving. While Leon continues to suffer from neurological complications affecting his ability to speak, he's a survivor and is dedicated to promoting a healthy team lifestyle in partnership with our Siskiyou Substance Abuse Coalition. No youth should ever have to go through what he has, but Leon's message and others like it are shared with students in the numerous athletes' committed chapters in our high schools. Students are holding themselves and their peers accountable, and this program is raising the bar on expectations about behavior around drugs and alcohol. The next area I want to talk to you about is human trafficking. Two years ago, human trafficking was something we didn't think was a concern in Siskiyou County. Now we know better, and we've invested time, energy, and money to educate ourselves and our community about the signs. Some of you may have been able to attend the community forum that was held at College of the Siskys last year. Let me tell you about a situation involving one of our partners in the community that's a result of the education we've been doing. A young woman contacted the national trafficking helpline to say she was being trafficked, obviously against her will. She'd seen a post on our Facebook page about the national hotline. The call center took her information and immediately contacted one of our local partner agencies, who reached out to the young woman and gave her the assistance she needed to get out of the situation she was in. Sometimes it seems that we're fighting a losing battle against abuse, but when we hear stories such as that, it's all worthwhile. And last, I want to talk with you about access to health care. Consider a single mom, working two part-time jobs, and a child with behavioral problems. She didn't know who to call or what to do to get help for her child. What she needed was communication between her primary health care provider, the daughter's school, and the mental health community. The CSC is an active player and actually a founding member of the Siskiyou Health Care Collaborative and its subcommittees, working tirelessly with others in the health care community to make sure that everyone gets the primary and behavioral health care that they need. Critical to that equation is making the health care resources known to the provider community as well as consumers, and we've made significant steps forward in that. Looking forward, I'm very excited to announce Siskiyou Connect. It's a web-based, eight-hundred-number-or-texting information-and-referral access point for all community services. Think of it as a nine-one-one for community services, not emergency services. We're working on implementation plans now and expect to launch that early this fall. The Centers for Disease Control estimates that child abuse and neglect costs taxpayers a hundred and twenty-four billion dollars each year in this country. We can't put a dollar value on the life of a child, but we can play a part in ending child abuse. With few resources and limited staff, the CSC is leveraging all that we can and partnering with our peers in the northern California counties to elevate the strategies and enhance our collective efforts. Obviously, we still have a lot of work to do. The CSC will continue to focus our efforts on the root causes of child abuse, our collective impact work with local partner agencies, and our coalitions to reduce substance abuse, increase access to health care, prevent child sexual and trafficking abuse, and minimize the negative impacts of poverty on families are all strategies to that end. We believe we're setting the stage for real and lasting improvement in reducing the rate of child abuse in our country, and we thank you for partnering with us in our promotion efforts this month. Thank you.
What did we meet tonight? So, Bob and Sue, regarding Camp Hope, said it was sponsored by CASA. Are you affiliated with CASA, right?
CASA is one of our partners in the community, yes.
And Camp Hope is an organization for traumatized children?
Mm-hmm.
So for the rest of the public to know.
It truly does take a village. There are quite a few organizations working towards this end, all related to reducing child abuse. The Community Services Council, as a general rule, does not provide direct services to consumers. However, we're working on the root causes, and in order to do that, we need to network with all of the agencies that are providing services, and CASA is one of those. Thank you. Thanks.
Question.
Yes.
You mentioned root causes. What do you mean by root causes?
What are the conditions that create the environment that allow abuse to happen?
So you're stepping in trying to correct that before there is child abuse?
Yes. That's exactly what we're doing. In prevention, we're taking a step back and saying, what can we do to change our local community so that the environment is not conducive to abuse?
We have, like Ken said, we were at a meeting last night and you're talking about the CASA?
CASA.
CASA. And we have CPS also?
CPS is a county agency, Children's Protective Services. That's the agency that would be called when there is a complaint.
Are you partnering with them also?
We do partner with them, yes. They are a county agency, we're a private nonprofit, but we certainly partner with all of the county agencies involved in this.
If we, what is the process for us to, let's say we know of a case of child abuse. What's the process?
Would be to report it to the local authorities, and that would be the child protective services. I don't have the number on me right now.
And then when would you be, would your services be needed or used?
We would not in that case. Our services are intended to prevent someone from getting to that situation, so we would not handle a direct complaint, but we certainly would refer you to the appropriate referrals.
Thanks.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Not yet. Oh, you have a comment towards this? Wait, general comments in two seconds. We're gonna have the same thing. Now that that's done, on to public comment, non-agenda items. Now's the time for the public to speak on items that are not on the agenda, besides the ceremonial nineteen million dollar award for their sewer project. But without knowing, it came from Sacramento, which is what Bob is referring to, is that Sacramento Basin. We don't get funds from that area, we get ours from the northern California basin, so sometimes paying attention, you find these little weird things. I would like to make an announcement on, there is a Kids' Day, four-twenty-eight, which is a Saturday two weeks from now, from nine to about four, I believe it is. It's about twenty-plus vendors, there's a magic show going on, a air bouncy house, whatever they call those things. Anyway, it's just a fun day for kids where there are, each service organization presents what they do in the community, and it's usually a fun day for most of the kids. I think last year we had three hundred-plus children attend, and it's put on by the Family and Community Resource Center in Weed. Also in Etna on, shoot, I think it's the same day? Where's it going to be? Four-twenty-one? It's at Bel Air Park for the Kids' Day. Also in Etna, there is what's called a placemaking project, speaking of what Bob is saying about what other communities are doing to develop their recreational and ecotourism part of the community. A placemaking project is developing what your community has to offer anybody that comes to visit. So it's a new plan put on by the Siskiyou Revitalization Network. They are working with, I don't know if people have been paying attention to the T-Bid organization, which is a countywide organization to promote tourism. They're also working with the Call Your Information interpretive center to develop content on websites. So if you're interested in economic development for our community, and as I look out in my audience and I've heard three complaints regarding Love's Gas Station, complaints are great, solutions are better, so provide a solution, and maybe you got something going. So I also went to a C2C meeting, which is a Call Your Information interpretive center meeting, and we're continuing work on there on our website to promote a community calendar, and that community calendar is being developed for the Board of Supervisors. We have contracted with them to develop a social aspect to our community, again, looking at tourists coming in and actually just for our community members, whether you're from Truly Lake, Happy Camp, or Weed. It doesn't matter. I also have been attending, it's called the CTC, it's a broadband initiative for our local communities. We were approved to conduct a city, which we participated in. See, Weed gave about thirty-three thousand dollars, and so did Mount Shasta and Dunsmere, to see if we could develop high-speed internet to our communities. That study is concluding. We'll present a report that's available, will be available to the community, and also will be available to the council probably within a week or two, and showing our next directions. It proves that it's a very costly adventure when you don't have mega corporations involved, and we're not really attracted to mega corporations much, except gas maybe. Let's see, what else is there? I think that's about, I'll wrap it up and we'll move on. We will move on to an administrative hearing, and Holly, did you want to continue or did you want to postpone?
Well, I would like to postpone, given I don't see Ron Stock or Paul, I thought Paul might be here. I would like my engineer, who's traveled a far distance at my expense, to be able to make a statement.
You have to speak up because we can't hear you.
I would, if it's-
It won't do any good, that's not on.
Oh.
Okay, sorry.
I'm sorry. I would, if it's permissible to you, request, though I would like it, continue to another date, I would, permissible to you, for you to allow my engineer to present some information with no action being taken at this time, other than if you're willing to table it to the time when Ron and Paul Morton are at liberty and to be here, if that works for you. A brief presentation, he's spent a lot of effort and time in my mind to get here.
What do you think, Molly?
I would defer to our city attorney for that.
Should we allow that witness to?
You think it'd be fine, even though it'd be kind of pest milk, piecemeal to go?
No, I take it he's unavailable next week, is that good for next month?
I don't know what's going to happen next month, I just know that he is here, prepared to a certain degree, and this can give you background information, because I can't always express myself to the point clearly, accurately, and I'm not an engineer or a builder.
Okay.
You could open the hearing, allow her to present that and then continue to the next meeting.
Okay. Does your microphone work? Are microphones working? I didn't even ask.
They are working.
Okay.
So I need to speak, we need to speak.
They're working.
You need to project because yours isn't working.
Yours is.
Well, I'm gonna open up.
Microphones are working, they're stored in broadcast, they're not being amplified in the house. So, all micro, correct, I understand that. All microphones are being used for the broadcast, for records.
All right, so just in the house?
Yeah, of course. That will be addressed.
All right, thank you very much.
And can the audience hear us up here?
Sometimes not.
Okay. So we'll try to speak a little bit louder, and if we're not being heard.
I can never hear Bob, he's got a real quiet voice.
Apparently I'm yelling, is that what you're saying?
No.
Okay. Okay, we'll open up the hearing for Holly, and we will, this hearing is, you know, she wants to open it up so that she has an engineer that wants to speak, is that correct?
Right, with the understanding, if you're in agreement, that we will not take any action right now because the people-
We know, I can take care of that part.
Yes, all right.
Okay. Does the staff have a presentation at this point, or are we ready, or will Holly postpone that part too?
Yeah, our intent was to postpone that information until witnesses were present for cross-examination by Ms.
Okay, so we'll skip down to item number, number five. Proponent arguments and/or evidence, speakers will be limited to three minutes approximately. If it's a little longer, it'll be fine, I guess, tonight.
Okay, is this like a proponent or?
It's time for him to speak.
Okay, all right, thank you. Proponents of names.
Yes, and that would be also your witness.
And, right, please.
You're welcome.
Well, hello, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Daniel Simon. I'm a registered professional engineer in the state of California with only over twenty years of experience, and I'll have to somehow make this short for you, but I've had over a dozen code compliance projects, if you will, and from what I'm seeing of all the clients I've had, I haven't had a client that has been calling the city offices for understanding and clarification as much as Holly, you know, I'm not just talking from Holly's perspective, but also from, you know, down here, her friend. And my approach is really simple, let's get everybody together and talk, and let's figure out what the city wants, and just move forward and solve the problems. So I've prepared a document for the record that I'd like to provide, and as far as compliance goes, I mean, I'm understanding some of the concerns. I've had a, well, voicemail conversation, if you will. Paul Morton has been nice to call back, and I've left messages. And the message I received this morning from Mr. Morton is that his hands are tied, because I wanted to meet him out in the field today. I first saw the site on Tuesday, so I'm pretty new at this, all right? But Mr. Morton said his hands are tied for some reason, and so, in my normal procedure in helping these situations, he's giving me a talk, you know, I talk to the client, you know, I guess he's not able to do that right now, so the Ford would have to, you know, let him speak with me, and me start moving forward. But this document I want to go ahead and provide, and as far as compliance goes, I'm working on a set of plans, because my client here had her house burned down, a bolt fire, and I've developed, I've actually been working on this for a couple of years, I've developed a, I call it code minimum home, sixteen feet by twenty-four, and as cheap as we can go, and so it would help her get a home. Now, I've got copies here for, I've got four copies here, three copies at least for you. But that would be a motivating factor to get a building permit, she's got to resolve her fence issues, okay? And the height thing, and again, worked it out with Paul Morton. And so, once she has her fence issues resolved, she can get a building permit and start building a house. And so I've actually, being to the side, I'm quite stunned at how much work she's done by hand, Willburl and a bucket and a shovel and a friend, must be a very good friend. But that's why things have probably gone slow in your perspective, is she doesn't have the greatest amount of funds, but she is working on securing funds to get, you know, a tractor, a backhoe, whatever it takes, to do some of the work that's necessary. So, but anyway, this is a motivating factor to help bring fence into compliance. So that's kind of my introduction, if you will. If you want to ask questions, I don't know if that's appropriate, but I want to go ahead and give the city council my, and I'll leave a copy for Paul Morton as well, so I'm not sure who to hand this to. So, yeah, in these situations, I've had success, even the community development director, Greg Flucker, with one situation a couple of years ago, he was pretty happy, I would call it dissolved, and he said, well, I guess maybe you're the go-to guy. Before that, the client was supposed to mention things about the city on Facebook. Let's get everybody together, let's work this out. Somehow I was able to get people to work together and move forward. So, anyway, but I just wanted to introduce myself, and hopefully, meeting with Paul will start, you know, you'll start hearing a good report, so you won't have to revoke the permit, or if possible, the fence is finalized with a final inspection. So, yeah, I'll see when the next meeting is, but I need Paul Morton to be free so I can do my assistance here, that's what I need.
Okay, what we will do is we will take your information, we will suspend the hearing at this point. And- Mr. Mayor, is there anyone else in the audience who came for this? Did anybody else come to speak on this particular matter? Did anybody else come to speak on this particular matter? For or against?
Um, uh, you may, we have prepared Tim Thompson as a witness, but I don't know if we can go into all of this.
No, I, I think we are, we're making an accommodation for Daniel here and otherwise we would have just postponed to the following meeting. So we've got his statements, we've got his information, so I suspect we will just suspend this hearing until another time. We'll set a time and, and give you notice of when that time would be.
Can I ask Mr. Simon a question?
Yes, Mr. Simon, you want to answer a question?
Um, where do you reside? What town, what city?
I'm in Marita right now.
Okay.
Yeah?
Anything else we need to do, Bob? This is kind of unusual.
I've got the date for the continuing sound of hearing.
What?
Looking in touch with her to-
We'll be in touch with you to establish a date for the hearing.
I'll tell you later, pause. So, thank you very much and I look forward to hearing from that and perhaps with that we can get information whether or not the council would permit, as Daniel described, him to work with Paul or speak to Paul at least so he can better understand what the issue is, if that's part of that, that would be-
We will continue the hearing at a later date, we'll let you know, and once we conduct the hearing, then you'll know a direction to go.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, and with that, I will close this hearing until further notice, I guess. And we'll move on to item A and I'm kind of, is this also a public hearing, Bob?
Yes, it is.
It's kind of by, sitting by itself?
Yeah, it's a public hearing.
Is it? Okay.
Sure.
Uh, we'll open a public hearing, this is regarding a bypass water supply pipeline project. This is a second addendum. Council will consider adopting resolution number zero seven, two, zero, one, eight, amending previously adopted and litigated negative declarations for the bypass water supply pipeline project. That was a lot. Uh, California Code of Regulation Title fourteen, Division six, Chapter three, fifteen, zero, six, one, B three, general rule exemption. And who wants to explain that one?
Well-
Okay.
I can take that. The original amendment that we brought to you, the environmental, we planned on taking the water line to the end of Lake Street and then boring under the tracks and then doing the directional bore all the way to the tank. We went in and did some drilling with a rock rig to see how much rocks we had, what kind of rocks we had, and it's not feasible, so we tried to drill up the hill. So this is basically going to be moving the line further into town, going up Yuke Street by Holly's and then going up the hill and it's all going to have to be open cut. So it changes the environmental, but all the stuff's there to cover, this is the environmental and the changes.
So we're not going to have to do a negative declaration or anything?
This is just an added breakdown of the synthetic marijuana, there was rat poisoning in it. Well, why wasn't it tested before they let the individuals use it? When the cannabis as of now has to be so tested before it can even get to us, to the consumer. So it's just funny how there's rules that don't apply because this is such a new industry. The federal government has just asked for input from doctors and everyone across the state, they're compiling a bunch of input because the federal government is actually looking at rescheduling or descheduling cannabis. I can send links and emails because they are looking for input from, from individuals, but that is a request from the actual federal government. I appreciate you adding this ordinance and hopefully having enough confidence that you have a facility here that, that works diligently to make sure that this is a safe environment and that it's not reaching children. Thank you.
And just so the audience knows, we were supposed to have a presentation regarding cannabis, but the council, we needed a little bit more information and so I asked Elizabeth to postpone that presentation until we had the information first and so, next month if you want to re-attend, there'll be a presentation regarding cannabis, the cannabis laws, I believe it was, and then-
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Julie Hofer, Stringtown, we, just, my understanding, this is dealing with the adult part of the ordinance, correct? Not the medical marijuana part? That's over a dungeon, correct?
Adult use, which is otherwise termed recreational.
Okay, so I just wanted to make sure that we were clear. I just wanted to see him against that in the downtown area. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Julie. Any other comments?
Thank you. Holly Hanser, two eleven Pine Street, three, three, four, East Lake Street. And in general-
You'll have to speak up again.
Sorry, in general, aside from calling you guys all criminals one time when you were first promoting this, of course, because it's still against federal law, I'm pretty quiet about this and I'm, I just, for the record, I'd like to say that I'm a teetotaler. I don't use any drugs, prescribed or otherwise unless it's, I don't even use them ordinarily unless I'm in the hospital under doctor's request or command. And as far as adult use of the cannabis, I want you guys to remember that this is a, something that somebody can get a DUI for and that it does affect minds and bodies and generations to come in certain ways and certainly ways different than alcohol, but it's still a DUI. So, I am generally opposed to this and I recently saw a study that was shared where people went across all of certain areas of California and I don't know if it was ninety percent or eighty percent of the cannabis sold in dispensaries actually had the DDT or the toxic pollutants in it. So, these all people assured the buyer that, oh yes, it's fine, it's fine. So, just to be aware that just because someone hopes and claims and advertises a certain way doesn't necessarily automatically mean that it's quote-unquote pure. And, and so, I just, again, caution that what we could be doing as a city and a society, certainly as a state, is giving a message again to the youth that, oh, isn't this cool? But yes, there's a problem with alcohol, we've seen alcohol deaths, we've seen horrible things with alcohol in youth. But where a youth, let's just go back to even a twenty-three-year-old youth who says or believes, whether it's recreational or medical, that they're using marijuana to help them sleep at night. Let me just leave it at this, that I've got work for them to do, they can help me move those wheelbarrows and help me move those buckets and I've got lots of room, I don't need to hire the Mexicans to do that, I can hire the youth for free. Because I work, like, with my Polish backhoe, harder, maybe not harder than the Mexican kids that I used to hire in the neighborhood when I was little, but they really work hard and I respect hard work, but for someone to, and one of these friends of my sons that I know from school is a young Mexican boy who's, who told me that at age twenty-three he was using marijuana to help him sleep at night. He's now in jail, his, in his case, it went on to harder drugs. So I just want us to know as a community, this aspect of it, and please don't ever forget it, that we are the leaders in the example and we need to provide avenues of-
Thanks.
... opportunity. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to apologize for the reference to the ethnic type in that response, just as a public.
That's okay. My, my ancestors will forgive her.
Just response.
So, okay.
Oh, oh.
So let's move on to, let's move on to handling this ordinance, number, do you want to get a motion?
Any, there's any discussion? No? Any more discussion?
Okay.
Do we have to talk about the exception? It was just added as amended, do we have to talk about it?
Can I vote separately on the sequoia reservation? Separate motion, separate vote.
Separate motion, separate vote.
My thing, it should be go first because it goes with the ordinance, is that okay?
Doesn't matter what order you do it, it just has to be settled.
Okay, we're already on this, we've already taken comments regarding the ordinance four four eight, two, zero, one, eight, so we can continue with the adoption or the refusal of the adult-use cannabis sales ordinance.
So we do with the, I move that reading full?
Uh, yes, it's a second reading.
Uh-huh. Of the body of ordinance number four four six dash two, zero, one, eight, be waived and said ordinance be read and adopted by title only.
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
I move adoption of ordinance number four four six dash two, zero, one, eight, and ordinance of the city, council of the city of Weed operating adult-use cannabis dispensaries.
Second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Let the record show, it was unanimous.
And that's all we have to do with this? This one is included in?
That's right, now we have to look at, we have an amendment. That amendment is to waive the sequoia exemption, yeah.
To adopt-
To adopt the sequoia exemption.
Yeah, exactly, right.
Right, okay. So that we don't have environmental quality on this. Do I get a motion to adopt the-
I make, Mr. Mayor, I make the motion to adopt this-
Notice of exemption for ordinance four four six, two, zero, one, eight.
Well, I'm going to have to back off then, I don't understand what you're asking for now, I thought we were just the sequel, this is for the sequoia?
Adopt approval of the notice of exemption.
We want to adopt approval of notice of exemption for ordinance four four six dash two, zero, one, eight.
Can I second what you just said?
You can just second.
Okay.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
So motion adopted and carried. On to item C. Community Development Department, fences, hedges, walls, council will consider introduction for first reading of ordinance four four seven dash two, zero, one, eight, amending Chapter fourteen, sixteen point four zero regarding fences and fence amortization. Do I have any report on that one?
Yes, on March twenty-first, the City Planning Commission held a public hearing in which they heard testimony and made a recommendation to the council on a five-zero vote to adopt this ordinance, which basically establishes a method and an opportunity to allow the city to look at and, and reduce fences that are unsightly or are unrepaired. And it gives an opportunity for those that are out of compliance with the current code to come within compliance over a ten-year period.
Any questions? I have one if there'll be answers.
No answer, I guess. Any other questions?
Not at this moment, I may have asked you speak.
On, part of the reading of the ordinance is sixteen point, the very first line, suspenses which were already in lawful existence. Lawful existence, define that, does that mean complete and approved by the building department?
Well, it'll be up to the administration, the city manager, to interpret some of this, but the intent that I had when I wrote it was that the fence had been constructed, pursued to a permit and had been completed.
Okay. So if it's not completed, none of this applies, just sort of like counsel.
If the permit's been pulled, but the fence hasn't yet been constructed, then it would be a different situation than when it's almost done, it's partially completed. You can't very well, retroactively impose the design requirements on a partially completed fence, but if it hasn't yet been constructed, it would have to be in compliance.
My, add a question to that, when you say it was already in lawful existence, the city manager can determine the nature of design and do a hazard, et cetera, or make a case, make a decision on it. Has the city manager been aware of this current information that's here, President?
I didn't get that.
You say that if it's in lawful existence, everything is fine unless the city manager or his or her designate determines different. So Max, has the current city manager been aware of what we're sharing today?
I'm not trying to understand the question, the city manager would have to, in conjunction with the building official, would have to make a determination, is that what you're asking?
Well, I'm saying, since we've done so much on it and city manager's been involved and the planning, the person, are they aware of what we're presenting today, that's all?
Yes.
Yes.
The city manager?
Yes, he is.
Well, that's what I was asking, because you're saying that, that they can make a change if it's not lawful existence, so I'm asking, are they aware of what we're presenting today?
The city manager is-
Yes.
Sure.
Okay, that's a normal, normal question. I think it is. Because we, because of our previous history with dealing with the fences in the last two years, it would be a valid question to see, city manager, are they aware of what we're presenting, what we're presenting today, right?
He wrote it, I believe, with your assistance, right? Most of you guys write these things?
I'm getting an echo here, I'm getting so hard to hear.
Okay. So who constructed the ordinance?
I wrote the ordinance.
Okay. And you wrote that ordinance in conjunction with our city administrator?
Well, I sent a copy down my draft, I'm sure.
Okay. So both of you are in approval of how this is working?
As far as I know, he has not told me he had a problem with any of it.
Okay. Does that answer, is that?
The city, city manager actually presented this at the planning commission and made that recommendation.
Okay, that has more validity, just so I know, who's written it, who's approved it, and just so.
So, this is the introduction of, of the ordinance number four four seven dash two, zero, one, eight. So we need somebody to introduce the-
Let me ask another question, I'm sorry, sir.
Okay, go ahead.
The, the actual-
Hold on.
Okay.
Go ahead, your comment, we have public comment.
The actual description of all that, where's, is that, is that in Chapter sixteen forty? The details, so everyone knows what the materials are and the height and all that?
It's in a separate ordinance, we adopted that last year, I believe.
Is that referenced here?
No, it's not here, we didn't, we didn't change any of that. See, the materials and all that, we addressed last summer, I think it was.
I'm just thinking, in layman's terms, can that just be added to this so people know where to go if they looked on this in the records to know where to go for the actual details?
It's already in the municipal code.
Sixteen, three, isn't it?
Right. It's, it's all under sixteen dash forty, we just added these four sections.
I just asked that, was it Chapter sixteen forty and we said no, so the answer would have been yes, that's, that's what I asked, is that Chapter sixteen forty?
It's in sixteen forty.
That's what I asked.
Yes, sir.
Okay. I asked and I was told no. Right?
It's in sixteen forty.
Okay, that's all I asked.
Maybe you just thought, no, just kidding.
No, I didn't think, I asked that.
Just giving you a bad time.
Publicness, you know, make sure we're clear, it's nothing about chill, it's being clear.
Okay, all right. Are we okay with it?
As long as we're, as long as attached to it, sure.
Okay. Anybody want to introduce after I'm, do you have a public comment first? Oh, public comment, I'm sorry. Holly, did you want to speak?
Yeah, I don't think anybody else wants to.
Well, you can be first.
Thank you. I would, Holly Hanser, two eleven Pine Street, three, three, four, East Lake Street, I don't know if this is working. I read this as part of my problem and my equation and this is part of what is shocking me, bringing me continued alarm. And I would plead the council to consider tabling this till after we find a remedy or don't find a remedy for my situation. Because the way I see this is if this is made into law, for lack of a better word, I'm, I want to say, not in a good situation. I will automatically have a draconian measure of possible fines and everything set against me and it's like, no hope. So, specifically because what the definition of illegal fence. I almost feel, though I could be wrong, that this has almost been drafted just for me. I'm probably wrong, but I could be partially correct because there were only four people or five. So, so, so I have a real problem with this and I would like it perhaps to be brought to the voters because there's people that I don't even think know about it who have these fences, that they're only going to be able to possibly use their fence for ten years. A lot of people don't know that their fences that, for whatever reason, they haven't repaired, nothing to do with the metal, is going to be fined and we don't know, so it seems to me that it would be fair to, at the very least, postpone it to give it more- So it seems to me that it would be fair to, at the very least, postpone it to give it more opportunity for people to be aware of this severe change, I believe it's a severe change, certainly is severe for me, but at the very, and possibly bring it to the voters. But also, um, uh, in my case, in, in, in part of this whole picture, you know, that I'm, uh, challenged with, and that you're challenged with, with me, um, it's part of the equation, that I have, in my position, in my belief, legally, lawfully obtained my permits, where I have obtained the permits. I suffered, as we know, cast of catastrophic loss, to no fault of my own, ongoing, as far as the bull's fire goes. And a lot of our city do too, I'm certainly not alone in this. And so this is part of the picture. Uh, at least, two of my neighbors who also have these metal fences also suffered that catastrophic loss, and one of them, like me, didn't have, uh, fire insurance on the day of the fire. So it's just a consideration that there could be some wisdom and fairness, and perhaps, uh, considering tabling this first reading until, uh, next month. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Holly. Any other comments? Any other comments from up here?
Yeah.
So, Mr. Mayor, I have a question, I, I don't see anything here that directly just pertains to that situation. Is there?
What situation?
To Holly's situation.
Well, it isn't, it isn't certainly limited to that, it would, it would, it would be touched upon in respect to whether the fence was lawfully constructed. And if hers was not lawfully constructed, then she would not get the grandfathering aspect of this ordinance, if that's what you're referring to. But I, I don't know what her situation is exactly, and I didn't try to write this for or against her situation. We just had a, you may recall the discussion we had, which was, well, we had this new ordinance that tells you what materials you can use, what can you do about existing fences? And Ron said, "Bob, go ahead and draft an ordinance that will address that amortization issue." And if, and basically what this does is say, if it's a health and safety issue, you've got to mitigate it immediately. You can't wait ten years for a fence to become safe. On the other hand, if it's only an aesthetic issue, then we'll give you a ten-year amortization on the fence, after which the city can require you to either replace it or mitigate it in some fashion, such that it will become, uh, less undesirable, you might say.
In the ten years being, actually to, for the property owner to prepare, prepare to change it.
To replace it or change it or paint it, or whatever is required under the circumstances. It would not necessarily have to be replaced.
Yeah.
That's what I read.
Yeah.
And may I make a brief comment to him, or probably not?
Uh, no, uh, this isn't a question and answer period, but, uh...
Yeah, so I, uh, I'm glad you're discussing this, thank you.
Thank you. So my question would be, that would, why I asked about, would complete then be defined by combination of the building inspector and the city administrator, or the powers that be?
That's always the case with every ordinance.
And then if, if that is not like, then they can appeal that decision to this body.
They always can, you know, whenever there's any kind of action up on the administration, it's always subject to the administrative appeals process.
Okay. Good. Uh, so we need somebody to introduce the first reading.
So first time?
Yeah.
I move this reading in full of the body of ordinance number four-four-seven dash two-zero-one-eight. Be waived said ordinance being introduced for first reading by title only.
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I move introduction of ordinance number four-four-seven dash two-zero-one-eight and ordinance of the City Council of the City of Weed, amending chapters one, six point four-zero in regard to fences.
Second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
On to item D, Public Works Department, roads and maintenance. Council will consider introduction and adoption of resolution number zero-eight dash two-zero-one-eight concerning Senate Bill One, project lists for streets and road maintenance. Staff reports.
As you recall, last year, we brought this to you, uh, we had sixteen thousand, between sixteen and seventy thousand dollars last year through this department funding, which is SB one funding. And we marked that for the Vista Drive project, which we're still probably using it on. So this year, we'd like to take, we're getting around forty-nine thousand dollars. And we'd like to do basically the parking lot out here, which would be Tebby Street or Park Street, the main street over. Because we're also going to be doing that solar grant, and hopefully getting that structure there, and this will help us get all that, you know, taken care of, try to get everything done all at once, and so, that's where it's being marked for. So we need a resolution to the end of the state by May first.
Okay, I have a question. And I'm always asking this, because other folks are asking. I believe the city manager said that he did have, there was a way that he, that some funds would come in, that could look at other streets being, um, repaired or upgraded. Do, do you remember that? How, how would this affect that, or is that still in place?
Well, the money that was promised to us, and, and this, this is a new tax, new gas increase and all that, it's supposed to be used strictly for road funds. Forty-nine thousand dollars isn't a lot of money.
Right.
I mean, it's, it will not pay to do that entire section over clear to the post office. So, and you know, last year was sixteen thousand. There is a possibility we can save funds for multiple years and do an entire street project. And we may look into that next year or something, see how much we're getting, it should increase some.
So this, we're, we're actually combining funds, is what I'm ga- gain, uh, getting here. One is forty-nine thousand dollars for this little section right here.
Yeah.
And then combining that with money that we're spending on our solar project?
Yes.
So it's kind of a combination. We're, we're only what, doing three hundred feet or something?
And then the other one with the EDA grant, that's where this, uh, last year seventeen thousand's going to go towards that. Um, and as you remember, we had to come up with six hundred thousand match to get the three million dollars from EDA.
My only statement is that I hope we can look at other areas within the city to be repaired and replaced, however that works with the dollars. And I know certain grants come with certain areas and certain Caltrans attachments, I understand that. Um, hopefully we can have that mindset to look at other streets. That can be replaced.
Yeah, right, right now.
And parking lots, yes.
On the STIP proj- project list that just is coming out, it hasn't been voted on yet. Um, Lincoln, all the way out Angel Valley Road, is one that we have on the list that's coming, but it's looking like it's going to be about twenty, twenty-one. So we're, I'm still working on those, they just keep getting pushed out and pushed out.
And I understand how it works, when the money comes to California, the most populated area gets the money. It all goes to, I know, I understand that, I wish that didn't happen, but I understand that from business perspective.
Well, they do it for congestion relief. We don't have a lot of congestion here, so we need to rebuild our roads, and that's furthest down on the list.
And there's a big hole right at the Vista Drive on their side, coming from the College Way, that has not been repaired, and that's, that, that's part of the money that goes there, I know, because I've seen the replacement every year, and that's over a hundred thousand dollars.
And we are currently looking, we've just got some STIP money for that, didn't we?
The STIP money has been approved through the staff, and it has went to the CTC, and it has been voted on, I was told it stayed in there. And that was, um, five hundred and forty-four thousand dollars to go towards the EDA project. And that was originally given us, to us in federal monies, and it was one point seven million. But we couldn't use federal dollars to match with federal EDA dollars. So I got them to change it to STIP dollars and just back it out, and we ended up getting five forty-four, but we lost the other million.
And where is that going to, what area? Vista again?
Vista, the, uh, commercial district.
Yeah, the three million dollar project to be on Vista.
Each year? Every year, it seems like we, Vista, it goes to Vista.
Your commercial district is what pays our sales tax, which is a general...
It's a business, it's a business, I understand, it's a business, I don't like it, but I understand it.
One is cart, rental car, and horse and wagon.
Mr. Mayor, I have a quick question. Speaking of roads, what is, uh, North Davis, it's in pretty bad shape too, uh, what is the, uh, plan for that, do you, is that on the, on the list?
It's in, it's in our pavement, any, but the plan is being, yes, a low-rated, low road, probably over the thirties. The plan for roads this year is to do some strip sealing with some money that we have, and...
Not unless something you're repeating, you guys have the copy of the presentation you had given last week, if you have any questions.
I do. Just my thinking of establishing a resolution for a committee need to have A through Z kind of down. And what I'm hearing is that A through Z will be established by the committee. And I'm just thinking about how we've done things over the past. Not, it may be the cart before the horse, I don't know. But I'm thinking that, is this committee going to bring all the regulations complying with state and also when federal regulations come through too? Are we going to look at that also?
This is definitely going to fall, again, and I think last time I described it as somewhat of an academic exercise. Anything that this committee would create as far as standards of practice, soil composition, variety, or stuff like that, we would presuppose that all of that is happening in a regulatory compliance paradigm. So-
We would have to adopt it.
How do you mean? Like, no, I mean, you're asking like, is the work that we're going to do qualify under what the state's already set out?
And be appropriate for both sides. The growth and for the legal side and for the state, for everyone, everyone involved.
It would be beneficial if you look at all that as one. Like, all cultivation, all cultivation, distribution, manufacturing, and sales all happen under the same regulatory framework. Anything that this committee creates in terms of specific standards of practices for cultivation or nurseries is going to presuppose that your business operations are already in compliance with that state and local framework.
So that's type of information that we need to know that's going to be presented by this group? Or the possibility, you something? Forethought?
I think what he's referring to is that's already established by state law.
Yeah, we're not going to be doing much in the way of regulations at all.
Right, just following what's been regulated by the state.
Absolutely.
Okay.
But this is creating somewhat more stringent and higher standards as far as the actual operations of a given cultivation. In order to obtain that designation and to create a set of high standards for that designation.
Because as it reads, the general statement is to develop standards for the highest quality agricultural project, et cetera. And then it says to establish a committee to, with a statement of purposes, and set forth the membership of the committee. I'm dealing with a statement of purposes. That needs to hit everything that needs to be from A to Z.
So I think that's a statement of purpose, and please correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that's A through D here under the next segment. So we're going to establish the criteria, and again, that criteria list is a, there is a historical, traditional set of criteria that will be, you know, sort of customized for our industry, given the needs that the different stakeholders bring to that state level conversation. We're going to make recommendations to the city council regarding the establishment of a geographic region of origin encompassing the city, maybe not just the city itself, right? We're going to represent the city's interest and interact with this California Department of Food and Agricultural, Cal Cannabis Appalachian Development Program, as well as other Appalachian Development Committees. So there could eventually be a county-wide one started. There are already two county-wide ones. We are going to be hopefully encompassing, maybe not just a conversation on this, because we do inhabit the same geographic region of origin. And we'll have quarterly reports back on this. I mean-
And Dunsmere or no?
Dunsmere sits in that valley a little bit. They have way different levels of sun and way lower average than-
They have no sun.
Maybe should be added to that, some type of legalese that talks about the appropriate laws and something else. Just the laws by from the state and federal government, just make sure that covered. I think, because that's not there in the purpose.
Sure.
That doesn't hit anything on that.
No, I understand. I see where you're coming from. Yeah.
I think that would be important. So we know that wherever the state says this meets that, where the federal says, when they've come along with it, meets that. Or we can change as it goes.
So, and you brought this up last month, and I actually, as I was driving home, I realized, you know what, I could have had a better answer to the question. Appalachians, as defined within state and county agricultural departments, are de facto recognized by the federal government. So like, the federal government has no oversight of the Appalachians of wine regions of California, but they, I forget the exact phrasing, they extend certain trademark and copyright types of protections to those locally designated geographic regions of origin.
So maybe that part should add it to that, that shows that for the local and state areas. So that's not here in the purpose.
Sure. Absolutely, yeah.
And actually, the presentations that Elizabeth didn't give tonight-
Yes.
-that would probably help this a little bit, because of, I don't know if you've seen that presentation, or I've just seen a couple slides of it, that kind of designate all the channels of legality and taxation and regulations.
We have to know that.
Yeah. Shane alluded to it as well. There are substantial onuses put on any cannabis business operator in the state of California. But I think it would be helpful to think about the business practices regulations that the state imposes as being separate. This is sort of underneath. And again, the presupposition is that everyone that participates in this program is operating a compliant business. So, you know, those state regs that talk about your tax structure, talk about your business practices, talk about your health and safety plan, those are already happening, and this is not really a part of that conversation. This is much more specific to us, again, the academia behind why things grown in a certain place are a certain way.
Well, I for one would like to know what's being regulated by the state. And I agree with some of the residents have said, that whatever we're doing, that we follow the state, and maybe we don't have to do some of our city pieces. I know, the state has to come along. I just want to-
As part of the presentation that Elizabeth is going to do next month-
That will address that.
It's going to address the kind of the order of the regulations.
Yeah, she was trying to, she wanted to give you a better breakdown of the chain of custody and-
Yeah.
Better description.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, chain of custody.
Are you making this, are you forming this mix?
I am going to form it, not tonight, but I believe that we want, there is a framework in this ordinance that we read that says we want at least one council member.
Right.
We want, we want somebody from staff to also participate. Ron is going to be one, and he'll probably appoint someone else in his absence. Okay. Well, we can address that later. And then the amount of people is between, is it five and nine?
Five to nine, right. Five to nine.
And five and nine, I suggested because seven might be an ideal number, but occasionally if you need a specific quality from a member, whether there be a legal expertise or a maybe farming, I don't know, what else will be involved, you can actually add to the board for a particular reason.
Yeah.
So you can-
Just, just to be clear. So you want to see the inclusion in the purposes list something along the lines of the Appalachian Committee will ensure that any permit holders applying to utilize designation or in compliance with local and state law?
I believe that should be added to it.
I think we can do that.
Yeah.
And then just the question about the quorum, it says three, but if you have nine members or five, either difference, shouldn't it be a little bit higher? Because if you want the legalese, certain aspects of people-
If you go too high, it's sometimes too hard to get a quorum. And if you're without a quorum, since this is done under the Brown Act, you would have to stop the meeting. So if you had something like 13, if you didn't get seven or eight people-
Speaking of a higher quorum, like maybe five instead of three.
Well, we're going to start off with seven, I think. I suppose the intent of-
Perhaps it could be something like, if the committee has denied people, the quorum becomes five. But until it got to that point to have five, because it could only do like three.
Well, you guys are giving a range for members, so I think that should be a range of the quorum too.
Sure.
Well, it is. It's-
It's not here. It says three.
Is that right, Bob? A quorum is two-thirds of a member?
It's whatever you say it is.
Right. That's not here. It just says three members constitute a quorum. So if you want to say two-thirds, whatever the vote's going to be-
I would say two-thirds would be more accurate.
Let's change that, so that if the numbers change it.
Doesn't have to be-
You can change it here, right now, whatever you decide.
My suggestion is that we change the wording, so whatever the number is, it's a third of the membership. So that, and that's effective, whatever the third is.
Two-thirds, right?
I, whatever's the-
Two-thirds of the members, and then if we had six people and we had to vote, we could have a split? I don't know.
If there's nine. So if you have seven, two-thirds would become four.
Okay.
Okay?
Sure.
So in other words, you have at least a majority of the-
Committee members.
-committee present to take action.
Okay.
That would be, that's most boards I sit on require a quorum.
You should have a quorum, but as I said, it's up to you to decide what that's going to be.
We could also say one more than 50%, right?
Four, four of seven, is that, it's not two-thirds.
Somebody got a calculator out there?
It's not, well, it's not.
More than 50% sounds even. That sounds like okay. So whatever the number is, more than half.
What is it, Bob?
Especially if you're only going to meet one in the month, I would just hate to have a situation where like, we do all this preparation, and everyone comes prepared, and then we can't have a meeting, so somebody can show.
Well, that's why you have to, you have to, no, you select your membership that can show. That's, you don't need flakes. Is that a technical term? Did you want to say something, Shane?
Yeah, I'd just like to say one more thing. For me, it's similar to 548 forms we got for, to me, it's similar to dog breeders. If you're part of the UKC, AKC, whatever, you're going to join that part. And then I'm going to have somebody else come along and- And then I'm gonna have somebody else come along and say, well, those standards aren't good enough, I think we need to put more regulations on them, and tell you how to do your soil. A lot of these trades are secrets, and a lot of things we do are secrets. And if the state says you meet the mandate, plus there's already all these testing, like you'll see in June the first, all the tests that we have to meet, no pesticides, no chemicals, no mold, no nothing. Why do we need higher standards? What are we trying to create here? Well, find the standards that we already have, maybe see what those are before we're going on to higher standards, maybe next year, after we get through a first year, then maybe form an Appalachian, but until then, maybe we should hold off on this, because a lot of it is trade secret, and we're all trying to get started, and I realize it is time off a, a year or whatever, the discussion and all that, but what are you guys discussing? Like I said, if a dog breeder is already part of a certain organization, and those standards are already met nationwide or statewide, why are we putting more, more standards on it unless, I get the stamping a little bit, but I think we're just moving too fast, again.
Well, I, I think it's not moving too fast, I think it's protecting the interests of our city. So that you have to have certain regulations in, in order for, for the city to, actually, I, do you wanna know the truth? To make money on it. And to me, out of all of this stuff, it's just about the money, I'm sorry, so that's, uh.
Well, and Shane, it is.
I want it to be clear.
And, but there also is some standards to be met, because you just don't want everybody.
Do you know the standards you're already helping though?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a comment. I think what we're, we're missing the point, we're creating a committee, you know, to, to get him, to become informed. And, and as far as Appalachian and, and the trade, and, and the trademark, what we're telling, there, there are a lot of people that aren't part of, uh, part of this, and we have people that oppose this.
Agreed.
Okay, our responsibility, or what I feel, our responsibility is, is to get what we can for, for the, for our constituents. And regarding the, the, this, uh, the Appalachian, it's, uh, we wanna make sure that if we're gonna use any part of our community to sell a, a, a product, that it's going to be the, the real thing. It's not gonna be what you think, it's what we think, it's what the community has decided on.
And it's gonna be only.
So, so that's why we're gonna form a committee. And regarding moving too fast, uh, you know, uh, moving too fast right now is, forming a committee is not making any ordinance, we haven't passed anything, we're taking a look at it. So for you to come up here and to try to tell us not to do, not to form a committee, I think it's kinda.
I'm asking.
Yeah, well, that's what I'm saying, I don't think that you're really being, uh, you know, thorough. You're not thinking this through from other people's perspective, you're, you're talking about your perspective.
No, I'm trying to talk as a, an industry standard that we're putting a whole.
I'm talking about a community here. We have a community that does have some, uh, monetary value in, 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 in the product that comes out of weed. And, and, uh, to do that, we have to have regulations on it, we have to form a committee to find out what we are actually dealing with. And to say not to have a committee, I mean, come on, Shane.
There's weed on a thousand other products that we don't have committees for. We don't hold standards on those as well. There's weed on a million other products, but we don't hold standards to.
Well, we're not going to allow anybody to come in here to sell weed, weed, without the community, uh, being compensated for it, that's my point.
That's why, that's why, this is.
Thanks, Shane. Any more comments regarding it, did you wanna? Your time is close.
CJ, I'm curious, my hot lane, I just wanted to, uh, just point out that the idea of the Appalachian is not to exclude anyone or make it more difficult to produce cannabis here, it's to elevate the standard of cannabis that is coming from here. So, yeah, it is about making money, because if we're elevating the product, we're elevating the experience, which is Appalachian, which is. This is an option, it's not, you're not mandated, can you guess, but that's not what we're talking about, we're talking about having a conversation.
And I'm just rather frank in the fact is, this is an industry. Industry has standards, industries generate money. And I don't wanna call it anything other than an industry that generates money. Whether I ingest the product or not ingest the product, the industry is about generating money, and that's just plain and simple to me. And I, I would like the community to, uh, I don't even, I don't know if they're gonna embrace this or not. I am hoping that they embrace it enough to understand that it is a commercial enterprise. That's just my thinking, so.
Thank you.
Thanks. Any more? Any more comments?
Anybody wanna make a motion?
I'm making, Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to, uh, read Resolution Number zero-nine-two-zero-one-eight, by title only.
I have a question.
Question.
Just to ensure that what's been talked about has been added to it, can that be in his introduction too? We talked about some things.
I'll second it, and now your question, okay.
So then, the information that the gentleman said he would add about the, um, general field for state linked to all those things we've talked about tonight, that'd be added to it, cause that's not in the resolution as it is.
That's, 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 that's a pretty broad, I, I would have to have that, uh. He talked about a lot of things, so I mean.
Well, just.
Well, you're talking, you were saying.
The one state, the one sentence he read, that was for local and state, I think that should be added to that.
Can you read that again, Ray, or whatever you got it?
Uh, yeah, it was just to, um, you know, Appalachian Committee will further ensure that any permit holders applying to utilize designation are also in compliance with state and local ordinances.
And.
I can email that to, to.
There you go. I was getting ready to write, and I mean, you talked way too fast.
I'll, I'll email to the boss, I, I got it.
Okay. So, you want to adopt Resolution Number zero-nine-dash-two-zero-one-eight as amended?
That's correct.
By title only.
Can we add that to your introduction, Mr. Paul?
Sure.
And to your second?
As amended, to add that language to that.
And sue, tell, you second it, right?
No.
I second, I seconded.
Okay, is that okay?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Shoot us out of our misery on this one.
Yeah.
Okay.
What did you decide on the quorum, we need to make a note of that.
Pardon me?
What did you decide to do about the quorum, wanna make sure that's reflected?
I think, I don't, I don't think we need to change that, and if we do think we need to change it, we can, we can amend the ordinance.
I think fifty percent plus one sounds good to me, and then Dunsmere about the number, that's my thinking.
What's it, three, hold on.
Three, please, three. So regardless of the numbers, if it's fifty percent plus one, then we can attach that.
Okay, instead of three members, let's amend fifty plus one, do we need to take another vote on that? Fifty percent plus one. So if we have seven members on there, it is three and a half, plus four and a half.
Majority of the seats.
Majority is easier, okay, majority. So that would be if there's seven, there's four, if five show up, okay. Cause we haven't appointed yet. Majority. Do we need to reread that?
I could spend another.
You got it? I could spend another.
Yeah.
All right.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I'm making a.
I wanna warm me out.
I'm making a motion to, uh, the, in the direction, an adoption of Resolution Number zero-nine-dash-two-zero-one-eight. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Weed Organizing Appalachian Development Committee.
As amended.
As amended.
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item F, Community Development Public Safety Departments, Application Fees for Adult Use Cannabis. Council will consider adoption of Resolution Number thirteen-dash-two-zero-one-eight, adopting a fee for adult use permit applications.
Yes, on, uh, Item B of the regular agenda, the adult use dispensaries you, uh, did second reading on. Within that ordinance, Section eight-point-three-one-point-zero-seven-zero talks about a permit, and Section B applies a fee, and, uh, those fees are applied by resolution. So Resolution thirteen-dash-twenty-eighteen is before you to establish that fee. The, uh, the amount of, uh, work beyond this point should be limited, uh, and minimal. So I don't see that fee, uh, beyond the, uh, initial dispensary fee of ten thousand dollars be too high, but there should be some type of a fee, I would assume at this point.
I would agree, ten thousand was extremely high, and is twenty-five dollars too cheap?
There, there should be still some work to be done by processing the applications or processing the, the information to get there, I.
I know, but we did, I, ten thousand dollars for selling cannabis in the city of weed, and I've seen other communities establish those rates at.
Twenty-eight thousand.
Six hundred, or six hundred dollars.
Or six hundred. Or six hundred.
Oh.
So, and I don't know, Dunsmere hasn't done theirs yet, but, uh, they have established the fees.
I think what's suggested last minute in discussion, it said one fifty or two hundred dollars. I don't know if you can look at that, but that was talking about.
I'd say a hundred.
I believe that at ten thousand, it has to be minimal, first of all, uh, it's a fee that can be adopted if we feel that, uh.
Yeah, it, it could be changed by a, a second resolution.
But at ten thousand, I think we've more than covered our bases to start off.
I said fifteen hundred. I said twenty-five.
Oh, twenty-five, I was just concerned.
Almost. I actually said seven dollars, but.
Seven?
Eight, ten thousand.
It, it, that is a lot, I think, I mean, uh, we don't wanna chase the afterdoor further.
One hundred? A hundred, a hundred even, or close?
I'm good with a hundred.
One hundred it is, and we need to vote on it, though.
So this the first reading?
It's a resolution.
It's a resolution, so we need one reading.
Um, let's see, will I move that, any more, any more discussions, Mayor, or are we at vote?
Nowhere a discussion, if we wanna reduce, we can still have a discussion after first and second.
Do you want the public to give anything?
Public, any comment on what we're doing, anybody know what we're doing, not know what we're doing? I don't even know if you can hear us, is everybody hearing this?
I heard someone all.
Blah, 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 blah.
Nancy Quigley.
Hi, Nancy.
I stepped out for a minute, so I apologize if I'm off. But if you're doing a fee for recreational, I encourage you to go hot, because, um, I looked up other cities and they've charged twenty thousand something, so don't be afraid to turn plenty.
Thank you, Nancy, and I would probably, I'm not sure, I, I, I've been privy to some numbers, and I don't think that that would work, so, uh, maybe as. Things would go, go ahead.
I was, I was just gonna say about the fees, you know, I, I want the city to make as much money as they possibly can. I'd probably agree with this lady here as having them high, but the problem is with having them so high, you're not gonna give the local people a chance to come in and, and, and lift themselves up and lift this town up. People will come in from out of town that have that kind of money, not everybody has that kind of money for the type of use, just take into consideration.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, can I say something? Um, to be an adult use shop, they have to have had a medicinal license, and that license was ten thousand. So we've already gotten ten thousand from them.
Do you want to charge them ten again?
We are not going to charge them ten again, we'll charge them the hundred.
Okay.
Because, I suppose technically, they could come in and not do recreational, they could just be medicinal. In fact, right now, both of them are not.
Both of them are not medicinal, and it's.
They're both medicinal, so that's a requirement.
Are medicinal.
Right.
That's a.
That's requirement of regulation.
I, I agree since that they are, the two existing dispensaries have already paid ten thousand for their medical license, something nominal, a hundred bucks sounds great, uh, they're already putting lots of money into their business, trying to pay all their workers and everything. It shouldn't be, uh, something prohibitive, a hundred bucks sounds fine, since they've already paid ten thousand dollars.
I can't. Mrs. Cassidy herself, she's saying.
Do you think it needs to be higher?
No, I, I think one hundred is ample at this particular point.
I don't know if there are any other expenses we need to meet, we've already kind of.
Yeah, there, there will be a process that needs to take place to notify the city that they are going to, to apply for the recreational, so there will be some work processing that, but I think it's minimal, and I think a hundred dollars is probably ample.
And I look at the fee schedule, they have to pay again to the state. They have to do another promo, FBI, they have to do a bunch of hoops that are repetitive. So, I'm not sure what that's all about.
We don't have to do that again.
No, the state is requiring, so there are a lot of fees that we as, as a council are not seeing at all. And that would be the benefit of, uh, Elizabeth's presentation to kind of go over those costs and factors. So, um, any more discussion? Eyeballs hurt. Okay, um, did we read the resolution by title only, did you make a motion to read it by title only, anybody? Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that we read, uh, Resolution Number one-three-dash-two-zero-one-eight by title only.
A second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Consider adoption of Resolution Number one-three-dash-two-zero-one-eight. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Weed, adopting a fee for adult use cannabis permit applications.
Second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Community Development Public Safety Department Applic-, oh, I did that already, oh.
Yeah, no, we're.
We're done, I wanna stay longer. Uh, on to the consent agenda.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pull.
So hold on one second, uh.
I'm ready.
Do I need, I apologize. We are missing one thing, I would like to amend, is it too late to amend the agenda?
Not too late.
Okay. I would like to add an item to the agenda.
Gee.
Uh, for a closed session discussion regarding the purchase of real estate, does that add a quick description?
Yes, we're supposed to identify unless there's some reason why it shouldn't be. Do you prefer not to, or you go, not to have your seller know your.
You can do real estate.
I could, real estate, I just know, I don't know the address, there's a lot number on my phone where we had credit.
I didn't know where it was.
Do we need to identify it?
Yeah, somehow identification board, is it an address, or?
There's no address, I have a lot number, do you have a plot number, there was an email, I have it on my phone if you don't have it. Did you get that email?
I, we got it, I'm not sure the location, so I didn't know what, what was gonna be.
I have it here.
I think we should pull, so we have a quick session, just till we know.
Are we ready?
Yeah. Got it.
Is that description or not?
That's fine, and the motion should be that the need to take action arose since the agenda was posted, and you wish to amend the agenda to add the site.
Just like he said.
Like I said.
Thank you, Bob. I get a second?
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Uh, so we'll move on to the consent agenda and then do closed session?
No.
Okay.
Oh.
So, does anybody wanna take, remove an item from the consent agenda?
I do, I want to look at number, to see the traffic resolution, one number, Item B.
Okay.
So I have just a couple questions on it.
Anybody else? I would like to pick out A. Okay.
Remove it or discuss it?
Discuss it.
No, move it.
Move it to. Move it to. Remove it.
Yeah.
Remove it.
Okay.
Okay, so, do I get a motion to accept the consent agenda except for Items A and B?
I still move.
You a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, let's take Item A, Trademark. Discussion to authorize city attorney to move forward in filing paperwork to trademark City of Weed, City Arch, and other uses, usage of the City of Weed's name. Did everybody hear me on that? Discussion?
I'd like to, I, I had it removed, because I, I think, uh, it's important if it. I'd like to, I, I had it removed because I, I think, uh, it's important that the public knows what we're talking about.
Sure.
When we talk about trademark. Could you explain why, uh, what, how a trademark could benefit this community? Or?
Well, if we give you control over that, reset that name, as it is now, anybody can use the City of Weed's name without any restriction. And if you want to have that become product affiliated, or affiliated with anything for that matter, you can control it by trademark.
Just, I have a question.
Sure.
Does that cost us anything?
Sure.
A lot?
Thousands, but not many thousands. Couple thousand.
Okay.
And what are the costs for? Just for?
Well, there's two, there's two, there are three different things. One is, uh, the actual government registration fees to the U.S. Patent and Trademark Office. I don't know what the current, I might, it's a center of a thousand, but it's in the hundreds. Uh, and the other part is to have an intellectual property attorney assist with this. This is a very narrow specialty that I know little about. I've done some trademark work, but this is a federal trademark. I'm thinking about here, and most of what I've done has been state trademarking work, which is, what's simple. Uh, so there's, uh, some legal expenses. And, uh, the third part of the is, is a search of the database to make sure that we are trademarking something that is actually available and in which we're not infringe upon some other trademark. And that takes us a level of legal expertise as well as the, uh, searching time.
And my question goes to, so businesses that have, have certain names of that in their products, how, how would they be addressed, or how, how are they affected?
Well, you could license them. You could actually say, you want to use the City of Weed's name on your product, we're gonna charge you ten cents for that. For every time you sell, or whatever way you wanted to do it. You would own the rights to that, just like Coca-Cola, just like Tide detergent. You know, you own that name. You can license it, allow it, disallow it, whatever it is you want to do. You might just say, we're gonna trademark it and nobody can use it at all for anything, if you want to. You don't have to use it because you own it. You just have to, you have to.
And you can also allow it even though you own it, is that correct?
What's that?
You can also allow it even though you own it.
You can. That's the opposite side. You can license it to whom you want to license it to for compensation.
Does that involve any kind of trademark, where, where we establish like the city seal as a trademark or?
Whatever it is, uh, usually we employ a graphic artist to create a rendering, which is used then for the registration process. And it, it's usually describing words and figures, usually there's some artwork and some letters. Sometimes, like the Nike swish has no na- has no letters, it just has a swish. But other times you have Coca-Cola in a certain format, stylized sort of way, and that's part of the trademark.
Thanks, Bob.
I think existing businesses, of course, where I work, of course, they have that, the store where I work, and other places within Weed that use the City of Weed. I just wonder how they would be approached or, or effect, affected by it, that's all.
I think they would have to secure a license.
If, if there's a historic use, they may have a common law right to, to use it just based on past usage. I don't know many businesses that have done that here, and it'd be kind of unusual to do that. But, uh, the, the City of Weed, is what I'm talking about, not just the word Weed, because that's a common parlance. But the City of Weed would be a.
So if, if you were making, in your case, I'm thinking, a shirt, a T-shirt.
Yeah.
That label would have to include the trademark, or does it not have to include?
Well, as I said, if, you already have shirts, as you said, with, with, uh, visit Weed, or what is it that says, uh?
Lots of different ones.
Yeah, there's all kinds of.
Enjoy Weed.
The word Weed is not a trademarkable word, uh, just by itself.
Right.
So that's a common language. By the certain stylized artwork, or a certain way of using the word Weed, such as City of Weed, could be trademarked.
I think we have it on police search, police search, say City of Weed.
Something could be trademarked as well. Yeah, in fact, buildings, you can't even just go take a picture of, of a recently constructed building without a trademark violation.
Oh, really?
Yeah. You can't publish it.
I take pictures of houses all the time. I mean, trademark violation?
Yeah, you actually, your architects will sometimes register those, and, uh, you can, how can you take, take a picture of them?
You never know.
Okay, I, uh, I make a motion to authorize city attorney to move forward in the filing paperwork, in filing paperwork to trademark City of Weed, City Arts, and other usage of this City of Weed's name.
Second.
Any more discussion? Any public discussion?
Uh, a quick story on that. I have a friend that follows a professional photographer, and he does a daily photo every day. And he put on his blog that he was gonna be out of town for the next ten days so he wouldn't be posting something daily. And Buddy Mike, and the next day, he posted a picture of the Weed Arch.
Did he really?
And she said, oh, I might know where that is.
Trademark violation, no. Uh, so it's been, firsted, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie. Item B, Public Safety Department, amend traffic resolution, adopt Resolution number ten two zero one eight, adding section twenty-six nine, loading and unloading of passengers only.
Mr. Mayor, my, my question was that, in the, um, agenda memorandum, it says, in the past, the second one says, these, the Fronteras del Norte, forgive my pronunciation, bus lines use the private parking area of the residence for stopping the location. With the addition of Greyhound buses, the parking is congested and unsafe to pedestrian traffic. So that sounds like that's a, that, that's a concern.
It is a concern. It, it's actually a concern and has been a concern up to this point, but with the Fronteras bus, there was less numbers present, and so it was less of an issue. Right at this point, we could have upwards of four buses in that parking lot at one time, and.
And so that's why it caught my attention. So that's why it caught my attention, because if we're, it was gonna be unsafe, then we're creating more that might be a hazard or unsafe predicament, or environment.
What we're asking is to move it from the parking lot and actually establish on the curb line, on Blackbeak Drive, a space that's actually, uh, an area of sixty feet, or whatever it is, sixty-eight feet, that is loading and lo- unloading for those passengers by itself. So there's no more traffic for those.
And no congestion or unsafe conditions?
No.
That's why, that's why I read that, I wanted to make sure that was clear.
Yeah.
Okay.
Years ago, when the bus was picking up and dropping off at that same location, that curb line was actually utilized and it worked real well for that.
And there's no problems with Greyhound incorporated, their partnership with it, or so, or anything, or the own, other new owner, or anything of that sort?
It'll just be a training, uh, time for the drivers to, to learn to park there versus pulling into the parking lot.
Is Dos Amigos gonna actually be open on hours required and fit our requirements?
It looks like they're in negotiations with Greyhound at this point to add additional personnel so that they can be open later in the evening and have restrooms available and those kind of things. As of right now, they're not in compliance, but they're working to become in compliance.
And, and that was my other question, because, well, the paper said six to ten, and I understand they'd, buses come at twelve, so are we gonna have some more presence there to make sure nothing else happens between those extra hours?
By our code, the Dos Amigos personnel have to put somebody there thirty minutes prior or thirty minutes after, or in certain cases, fifteen minutes before and fifteen minutes after.
So the paper, the news article di- didn't address that. It just says six to ten.
The news article didn't ask that question to me.
I see you've learned well. You only answer what you're asked. Okay? I know.
What you don't ask.
He's savvy. Okay.
He's savvy.
Good. That's only question, I had on that.
Okay, so then we need to.
We can just adopt it.
My motion right? We need a motion to read by title only and then adopt.
I don't think it's.
Oh, yeah.
Well, I, I'll do the motion since I took it off. I make a motion that, uh, let's see, it's a resolution. At the reading in full of the body of Resolution number one zero dash two oh one eight, be waived said Resolution being induced by, adopted by title only.
Second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Then I move adoption of Resolution number one zero dash two oh one eight, adding section twenty-six point nine, loading and unloading of passengers only. Be approved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I think we've just approved any ready. Okay, uh, staff reports. Do we do that first or want to go to closed session first?
Let's do the staff reports and close session at the end and where we ask to leave.
Mr. McInnes?
There were several of us in attendance at Lola meeting last night, uh, throughout the county that, uh, there's new businesses. But I would say, just from the response of the people from Puerto Rico, Mount Shasta, Dunsmere, and all of it, uh, Weed is doing quite well. I think there's, uh, people very envious of what's going on here. We appreciate the council's support in economic development, so you know that. Because it, it comes around, goes around, goes around, comes around. Well, it's, it's happening. Uh, grocery outlet in itself, uh, you know, they're selling, the food is not taxable. So it's not a great tax generator. However, it's a great attraction. It brings people in and they do other things. They like purchase fuel, so sales tax on fuel really is one of our big revenues, which really helps. Uh, another one is, um, Starbucks, another name that helps bring people in. And if people spend money, like if they pull off their, well, fill up and we'll have a Starbucks and then go. Have something else. See, if we have some other exit, we're going to have. There's other interest, uh?
Is our sales tax up?
Yes, it's about eleven point five eight percent up from last year. P O T is up, so, uh, it's interesting of what's going on. Greg walked up in the RV park, uh, the class of RV parks in South Bend, uh, Craig was working with Greg. He's got his RV out there now, so he can be on site and help start brushing and developing that. I, I don't know if he has his new permit from the state or not. The guy. Yeah, he had it at one time, but he, but it expired at that point, but, um, then the Holiday Inn Express is still chugging along. That, uh, hopefully now that they, with the new building codes and the new plans that are in, uh, they've spent a lot of money and I don't think they're gonna back away from it. But, uh, things are, uh, optimistic, uh, as far as, uh, the development and spinning off into, uh, other areas of Weed also.
Kelly, you, you mentioned, uh, grocery outlet. I, I think another.
Obvious, uh, benefit is that you just, to be able to go out and purchase them. You know, I mean, a lot of people have really appreciated to be able to, to go, to, uh, be able to afford to buy some groceries compared to what we had. The limited, uh, limited, uh, choi- choice we had before, and it's.
And another thing to add, uh, kudos and accolades to Grocery Outlet for keeping a nice, clean building, uh, well stocked. Going there at great prices, nothing but, very, very positive response from people out of town. Visiting last night with some of the people that I know throughout the county that were there. And, uh, it's, it's surprising the number of people that stop in at our Grocery Outlet.
Um, Kelly, I noticed a sign north, in that same side as Motel Six, just north of it, of some kind of a truck repair. Is somebody doing something there?
That's, uh, JP.
Yes.
Truck repair. He's, um, trying to get a location. He's looking at building there and drilling a well and a set he's taking and putting a shop in there.
Okay, good.
But right now, his current thing is to try to get a sign there. He owns the property. So when a trucker is looking for somebody, it'll Google, pointing, he's going, but he's mobile right now.
Oh, okay.
And that's, I said the north side?
Huh?
North side?
Yeah, same side of the street, just north of Motel Six.
And he's doing well.
Good.
Doing well, it's what he's doing, but having it at the side, that's gonna help you out.
Good spot. And as things develop, you.
About the VFW? What's going on at the VFW? I believe that was a wholesale outfit for, uh, who was, who was the outfit that was in Joe Pike's old place, Weed Auto Parts? The wool? Wool, yeah.
The wool distributors or?
They're out of Montego.
Yes.
They're out of Montego.
Woolbrokers? Yeah, he lives in Weed up the street. Very good. We got Owens looking at larger digs?
Yeah, it's not big enough over here. Fact is, if you went in recently, you'll see that they removed some shelving because it got.
Yeah, I went in for a bar candy bar.
I asked him, I asked him about it and they said, well, just, they need a larger facility. And it's, it's convenient for folks that live down in this area, but it's not convenient for someone else, so. They're looking for a, where they can have a larger facility. I spend my time.
Thank you. Spent your time. His time is up. Craig?
Uh, just real quick, the, um, state came down and said we had to test for any new water. But it's called a T C P one two three. It, um, it's cancer causing this in the waters around the state of California, so they made the new rules and new law. We tested our water, we passed, um, so now we have an extension for ten years. But it's, it's, a lot of communities have it. They're trying to figure out a way to treat it, so.
We're good. Where's the T C D chemical?
Do you say? Minerals, everything's lined up, minerals.
Quick question, Crystal Geyser, who puts water into our sewer system?
Yeah.
Just questioning the fact that there was some comments regarding some kind of plastic chemical that they use in their bottling. Does that affect us? Do you know?
We don't know because we don't have a waste discharge permit from, or we've got a sample point so we can see exactly what's going in. Now, we haven't seen a problem at the sewer plants since they've been here, nothing uncommon coming in, but, um, I know right now they're working with the water board and they're working on the disposal area.
So we're establishing a protocol?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
It works.
I do have a question, maybe for public works. There's a sign that's been going up about soil. And it's a couple of business owners have asked, what's being done with that? I, I had a conversation. I know what's happening. Maybe we should all know kind of what's happened, because they're still up and some people have a concern about it.
I have seen some other ones up around town. Our building inspector's got a hold of them and told them they needed to take them down, but I don't know that he told them, take them all down or just certain ones down, so we'll work on getting them down.
I've seen those in other parts of the county also.
Yeah, yeah. If you want to stop and take one down, help yourself.
Oh, I'm not going to. I just want the city to know that it's on the city, so I'm, no, that's.
I'd back up over it. I'd actually get up and track. Martin?
Well, just, uh, information, uh, it looks like June second will be our cleanup day this year. Saturday, week second, that's predominantly, uh, Saturday.
Quick question. I'm gonna go back to, I don't know who can answer. Are we still doing, uh, recycle pickup? Have we changed what we pay them? Have we changed any of our pickup points, anything like that?
No, it's still the same. To Blue Bay.
Blue Bay.
And they did do.
Sandy?
Nothing new to report.
You didn't go into any testing, doing anything?
Not yet, no.
She's just been playing poker.
Oh, sure.
No, I see.
Ron? Oh, Ron's on it. Bob? So, end of reports, uh, I make, absolutely make a motion to go, go to the closed session.
I shared to close session.
I second it. All in favor?
Aye.
So we'll be back in, I don't know, ten, fifteen, twenty, three hours? I don't know.
I just have to use the restroom, that's all.
Thanks for coming.
Thanks, Mayor. Thanks, Julie.
Thanks for hanging in there the whole way.